I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, March 21st, 2024 to order. Welcome, Schmidt, please give the rule.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pociac?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the flag of the British Empire, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Schmidt, please.
The village of Glendale Heights has started resurfacing West Fullerton Avenue from Schmell Road to Gundydale Road. This work will include roadway resurfacing, sidewalk and curb improvements, storm sewer repairs, and pavement marking replacement. This project is anticipated to be completed in late June, and there may be parking restrictions during this timeframe. The general contractor for this project is K-5 Construction Company with oversight by Chris Purbea Burke Engineering Limited. If you have any questions, please contact the project engineer, Andrew Bork, at (224) 500-0019. Stop by the Sports Hub on the first and third Thursdays of each month for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact town in Maco at (630) 909-5459. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Slikki?
Are you interested in gardening flowers and greenery? Look no further than the Glendale Heights Garden Club. On the first Wednesday of each month at 7:00 p.m., come by the Sports Hub and join our gardening enthusiasts to learn about gardening, make new friends, share tips, and watch our community bloom this spring. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Earth Hour is a worldwide event bringing together 152 countries and digital reach of over 200 million people. The village of Glendale Heights invites the community to join others around the world by turning off your lights, televisions, computers, cell phones, and electronic devices for one hour on Saturday, very hard thing to do. March 23rd, from 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., for more information, please visit www地earthhour.org to see what this impact can do on our planet.
Trustee Light?
Do you have any unwanted or old cell phones, retired U.S. flags, bikes, batteries, and other recyclables? Drop them off at the One Stop Reuse and Recycling Depot on Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH2O Aquatic Center Parking Lot located at 240 Civic Center Plaza. Items not accepted include hazardous waste, large appliances, and CFL bulbs. Document shredding will also be available at the event with limited of four boxes per vehicle. For more information or a complete list of accepted items, visit glendaleheights.org or call (630) 260-6000.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, April 6th, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302 or your district trustee. Join the Village of Glendale Heights team. We are now hiring for a variety of positions at the GH2O Aquatic Center and the Sports Hub, ranging from lifeguard to youth program counselor. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.org. Thank you.
Trustee Maritato, please.
In the recent March 19th election, the referendum proposed by Glendale School District 87 is still undecided, his votes are still being counted. The voters would like to remind the public that school districts are separate bodies, taxing bodies, from local municipalities, and the village has no control over school budgets, including the Glendale School District 87 referendum. We would also like to remind all village residents that the village of Glendale Heights has not increased our property tax levy for the past two years. Our property tax levy this year is exactly whatever it was last year. If you have any questions regarding the Glendale School District 87 referendum, please contact their administrative office at (630) 469-9100. I just want to make sure that everybody takes a look at that pie and you see where all the money's going. So just be aware, if this referendum passes, if you have a $300,000 house, you're probably gonna be paying over, what, over $150, only $50 a year on taxes?
Two.
I think it was one eighty?
Twenty seventy something.
Two hundred.
Two hundred? Just so remind everybody that it's not the voters at Glendale Heights raising anybody's taxes. Thank you.
Welcome. Trustee Pociac?
Hop on over this Saturday, March 23rd, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens for annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny. All-you-can-eat pancake breakfast will be served and include sausage and a beverage. Photos with the Easter Bunny will also be available. No pre-registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Adult breakfast costs $5. Children's breakfast costs $3. And pictures are $3 each. For more information, call (630) 260-6000.
Trustee Schroder, please.
Senior citizens age 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizen Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. If you're age 65 or better, honored before December 31st, 2023, or you have a spouse who is age 65. If you've lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2023 as either an owner or a renter. If you have earned no more than $45,000 gross income during 2023 and have utilities, bills, and paid in your name. Applications are being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 or the Finance Department at (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
We have the following proclamation. A proclamation to proclaim March 23, 2024, from 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. as Earth Hours. If there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation. Next is a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda item only? Anybody from public? No, none? Okay. You have the concept agenda before you. Word Acting Village Administrator, Doc Flynn, please read the concept agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of March 7th, 2024. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes of March 7th, 2024. Three, approval of the council payable listing of March 21st, 2024 in the amount of $1,560,470.64. Four, ordinance reserving and authorizing transfer volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters. Five, resolution of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, adopting third quarter fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget amendments. Six, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Third Amendment to the Cloud Data Storage Services Agreement between Central Square, formerly known as Sun Guard Public Sector LLC and the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Seven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between RecTrak LLC and the village of Glendale Heights for credit card payment processing services. Eight, resolution authorizing participation in joint purchase of Rock Salt within the village of Glendale Heights. Nine, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the pump rebuilding at the Glendale Heights Sports Hub. Ten, a resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number Two for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number three for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Twelve, resolution authorizing the execution of change orders number five for the 2021 MFT Road Program in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Thirteen, a resolution authorizing the execution of change orders number six for the 2021 MFT Road Program in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Fourteen, a motion approved pay request number six to Trotter Associates for the Mill Pond Lift Station improvements, total amount not to exceed $72,000. Fifteen, a motion approved pay request number six to Bowler Construction Company Incorporated for the water supplies facility rehabilitation, total amount not to exceed $136,209.28. Sixteen, a motion to approve pay request number six to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades, total amount not to exceed $1,595,605.05. Seventeen, motion approved pay request number three final to RW Dumpin' Company for the 2021 MFT Road Program, total amount not to exceed $201,134.17. Eighteen, motion approved pay request number four to Construction Inc. for the senior center renovation project, total amount not to exceed $106,195.54. Nineteen, approval of consent.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Light? Second. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through nine. Is there a motion to waive first reading in new business item two through nine? Ah, yes. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two through nine is approved. Number two, an ordinance to approve a constitutional use to permit an outdoor storage tank at 704 East Fullerton Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Dell LLC GBA Webster Half Corporation from the March 7th, 2024, COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-19. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-19? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Siddiqui, second. Discussion? None. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-19 is approved. Number three, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a congregate housing facility to be located at 743 Lepers Lane in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois from March 7th, 2024, COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-20. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-20? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second. And your second motion? Trustee Pociac? Second. Discussion? Roll call board, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 1-14-2 entitled Annexation Funds of Chapter 14 entitled Annexations of Title I entitled Administration of the Village Board of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois from March 7th, 2024, COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-21. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-21? Trustee?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Siddiqui? Second is Trustee Schroder. Discussion? Roll call board, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Hoy?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-21 is approved. Five, an ordinance to amend section 1-15-1 entitled fees established of Chapter 15 entitled land use fees of Title I entitled Administration of the Village Board of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois from March 7th, 2024, COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-22. And motion for there? Trustee Light?
So moved.
And your second motion?
Second.
Trustee? Pociac? Discussion? Roll call board?
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-22 is approved.
It's 23, not 22. 2024-23.
It's 22.
It's 22.
I have 22.
It's 22.
Oh, okay, sorry.
22. 22.
You have 22.
That's 22.
Number six, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 3 entitled Administration and Enforcement and various section of Chapter 13 entitled Plan Unit Developments of Title 11 entitled Zoning Regulation of the Village Board of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois from March 7th, 2024, COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-23. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-23? Trustee Maritato?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Siddiqui, second. Discussion? None. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes. The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-23 is approved. Number seven, an ordinance amend section 12-3-7 entitled Preliminary Plan and section 12-3-9 entitled Final Plaid of Chapter 3 entitled Plaid and Procedures of Title 12 entitled Subdivision Regulations of the Village Board of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois from March 7th, 2024, COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-24. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-24? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Pociac, second. Second, okay. Discussion? None. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-24 is approved. Number eight, an ordinance to amend Title 7 entitled Motor Vehicle and Traffic of the Village Board of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Relocators and Repossessors. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-25. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-25? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second. Second is Trustee Maritato. Discussion? None. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-25 is approved. Number nine, an ordinance waiving bit authorizing the issuance of notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2024 sanitary sewer CIPP lining various location project. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-26. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-26? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Pociac? Second. Discussion? None. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-26 is approved. Number 10, an ordinance to amend sections 3-21-1 entitled Definitions and 3-21-4 entitled Food and Beverages Tax of Article 1 of Chapter 2 entitled Village Taxes of Title 3 entitled Finance and Taxation of the Village Board of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Amendment to Local Food and Beverages Tax. First reading. Gee, public discussion of agenda item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only from the public? None? Anyone from public? Okay. Exempt session, we do not have exempt session. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Schmidt?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Trustee Schroder, second. Roll call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pociac?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Light, you have the commission, committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to call the committee the whole meeting for March 21st, 2024. Ms. Clerk, can you note who's here?
Noted.
Do we have any additions? deletions or anything? No, we're good. Pete, would, Peter, would you like to make a statement for me here?
Sure, we know committee reports, correct?
You want to do committee reports?
Let's do those first.
We'll do those first, okay. Let's do committee reports. Glendale Lakes Golf Club Committee.
Okay, I'll take that mic.
Okay.
The golf course has been open for play a lot in February and March. Driving golf rounds up. In February, we had 989 rounds were played during a 14-day span. And in March through yesterday, we have seen 811 rounds of golf.
Wow.
So I mean, we are getting a great, a great start this year for golf. So that's, that's great. Our next golf course meeting is scheduled for April 16th. If anybody would like to attend, it's April 16th. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. All right, Historical Committee. That's mine, no report tonight. Ordinance Committee?
No, I have no report. We are planning on a meeting soon, but we have no report tonight.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you, Mary. Parks and Recreation Committee?
I'll take that mic.
Okay, sure, Pat.
Parks and Rec Committee update. We had a meeting this past Tuesday, and we discussed Millennium Park. Some of the students that brought the original request for a new playground were at the Sports Hub on three different days to meet with Director Knobbs, where he shared the plans for the park with them and gave them a tour of the Sports Hub. The kids were really excited about the playground, and I had an opportunity to meet with the teacher and a few of their students. I'm gonna note on this. These kids brought this to the park committee probably two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago. And I tell you, they were shocked that they brought something to the park committee and it went and got done. I mean, it took us over, what, two years to get this done? But I mean, they were all happy that we got it, we got it done. And you should have seen the smiles on these kids' faces. It's all worth, it's all worth the price. And I got, we got more ideas for maybe next year, but we'll talk about that next time. And there was other discussions, the special event package for 2024 rates and items that were budgeted for the 24-25 fiscal year. And that's, that's the end, Mike. I think I'm finished.
That's it?
That's it for me.
Great work, thank you, Pat. Property Enhancement Committee?
No report.
No reports. Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
Right now, the senior citizen committee is very, very active. We have people coming in every day doing taxes for our seniors. We have walking sessions that many of the seniors are involved in. Those of you seniors that are not coming to the senior center are really missing a lot of things because there's so much going on. They have dining in DuPage once a month, and people are going to new restaurants that they've never been to. Right now, we have two cruises going, one to Alaska and the other one to the East Coast. And next month, the seniors will be going to New Orleans. So as you can hear, they're doing quite a bit, and there's a lot of activity going on. So those of you who are home and spending too much time there, come out to the senior center. You'll really have a wonderful time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mary. That's a, that's a lot going on. I got, I'll be 60 in September, so maybe I can join, you know? That'd be perfect. All right, before we go on to this next one, Peter, this would be a proper spot for you then.
Sure, before we begin public comment, the committee would just like to remind everyone that there is a three-minute limitation on speaking. And as a courtesy to everybody in the room to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak if they wish, if you hear somebody say something that you wanted to say, there's really not a need to repeat that. I mean, you can, but all you're really doing is keeping people here longer than they need to. So if, if the comment is, you know, we're killing the kids, we need to stop that. If somebody says it, we understand that. The committee appreciates your comment. They're happy to hear your comment, but we don't need to hear the same comment 10 times. So with that, we'll turn it over to the public, if that's okay, Mr.?
No, please.
So we can begin public comment on anything related to this meeting.
Thank you.
If you just identify yourself.
Yeah, so you can just, what town you live in and your name, please.
So, Glendale Heights. So as we know, many people are calling for immediate ceasefire in Gaza and Israel. And they want Israel to retreat its forces and for Hamas to stop flying rockets into Israel. I get it, it makes sense on paper. Demanding an immediate unconditional ceasefire without an agreement, requiring Hamas to release the hostages while not bringing a durable peace.
requiring Hamas to release the hostages while not bringing a durable peace. Instead, it could extend the fighting between Hamas and Israel. A ceasefire in Gaza would only lead to more bloodshed in the future and would ultimately strengthen Hamas. The recent Hamas massacre where over one thousand innocent civilians were murdered actually happened during a ceasefire. The idea of going back to that story's quote seems baffling. During a recent interview, a Hamas leader boasted that the last two years Hamas strategically limited engagement with Israel as to convince them that they actually cared about governing the people in Gaza. In reality, they used the two years to plan the massacre. A ceasefire would just give Hamas what they want and time to regroup. You can follow the daisy chain of revenge attacks for many decades. Only way it stops is if both sides can muster up the moral fortitude to let it go the last word. If there is a ceasefire option that accounts for the hostages and that would prevent Hamas or any other entity from acting more terror attacks, I would be all for it. I've just yet to hear, hear it or broach it in an articulated, practical way.
Thank you, Sal.
My name is Jamal Nasir, I'm in Streamwood, but I have investments over here in a nonprofit. Uh, this is impressive setting and impressive proceedings. And a lot of blood and sweat of two hundred plus years have gone into to make this possible. The sand is shifting under our feet now. There's change. The younger people and the whole world is in flux. If we don't tune to that, we are out of touch. We, as people, you know, we just did allegiance of, uh, and, uh, it seems to me like a lip service now because we are failing on all fronts. As people united, political, economic, moral, technology, climate, you name it. We are failing, something needs to be done. And we cannot, uh, the reason I've come here, uh, I appeal to you to change your tactic in bringing people together because otherwise this will all go downwards. The only way you can produce real unity is to be principle based. We're not doing our personal careers and ambitions. Let's get together and find principles. There is a principle in which, uh, you will give the title to it in your hearts that if someone targets innocent people for political gains, what is it called? There is a need for, uh, a call, uh, for that. So, uh, all the people in Glendale Heights, big majority, I'm not alone, and across America is moving in that direction. So I ask board to think about getting in line with that, not to oppose or, or, you know, be for something, but just to be principled so that we come together. Thank you.
Name and what town you live in, please.
I'm sorry?
Name and town you live in?
Nada Jazay and I'm a Glendale Heights resident.
Okay.
Most of us know what we're getting when we purchase something, right? However, I do not believe that all of you know what you've paid for in the amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and one dollars. I don't think you know because you are good people who only want to invest in the wellness and goodness of all of us, am I right? So I want to ask why? Why are you paying the IDF to shoot a woman who was seven months pregnant in the stomach in front of her five-year-old son? Why are you paying the IDF to humiliate Palestinian men by addressing them, exposing their tortured back, only to point, laugh, and upload videos for the world to see? Why are you paying the IDF to sexually violate, deny menstrual care and food to detain, to detain Palestinian women, which include UN human rights reporters and journalists, while being caged outside in the cold and rain? On Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, the IDF attacked the largest medical complex, Al Shifa Hospital. Thirty thousand displaced, starving, and injured Palestinians are trapped inside as Israeli soldiers invade the hospital, killing, beating, abducting Palestinians in large numbers, including journalists. Witnesses inside say the hos, uh, in the hospital say that Israeli soldiers are shooting, quote, "at anything that moves." According to the I M E U, the first time the IDF attacked Al Shifa Hospital was on November eleventh, twenty twenty three, with a full backing of the Biden administration, where they were killed and injured dozen of pa, patients and doctors. However, due to the ongoing military propaganda, it was later found that it was incredible, lies. So I ask you, are you funding them because they don't look like me or the men are behind me? Or are you funding them because you would rather be complicit in the genocide and have blood on your hands that sustain our public school, uh, then sustain our public school teacher salaries? Or is it really because you just don't know? Well, let me tell you, this is not just another country's problem, nor are we standing here in front of, in front of you to solve other people's problems. Like you heard, like I heard other constituents say, this is not an American problem. This is not only an American problem, this is a village problem. I think, trustee White, you mentioned that this is a village business, but it is. Because as we struggle to place food on the table, pay for our mortgages, collect social security, hopefully, or even afford healthcare, our trustees are blindingly sending four hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and one dollars of Glendale Heights village funding to a foreign country, not America, so that the IDF can continue to slaughter civilians, steal land, commit crimes against humanity, and laugh in our faces because they can do it. Please call for a ceasefire resolution today. Do it for your people, do it for your country, but most of all, do it for yourself because I know none of you guys want innocent civilian blood on your hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay in line, sir.
Hi, I'm, I'm Singh Mago, I'm from Wayne, Illinois, but I have two aunts and one uncle in Glendale Heights and I, this was where I spent a lot of my weekends. Um, I wish that our board trustees, and thank you for having us here, but I wish that your enthusiasm for children's smiles at a park extended to the childrens that don't, children that don't have smiles in Gaza that are being killed. Um, I'm from the Sikh community and one thing that I want you guys to understand is before October seventh, it was one of the deadliest years for, of violence, of settler violence against the West Bank. So the ceasefire, that wasn't even existence. About over two hundred Palestinians were already killed before October seventh. So just put that into perspective. Now, I will talk about the Sikh community and our views of the code of conduct of war developed in seventeen oh four before the Geneva Conventions. I'll take you to a time when the Sikh Kalsa Army was fighting the Mughal Empire who were oppressing us and they happened to be Muslim because oppression knows no religion. So it can be Muslim, it could have been Sikhs that were oppressing Sikhs. It could have been Muslims oppressing Muslims. So Baikaneji was a member of the, uh, service of the Sikh military and what he did was he was a cupbearer. He was a person that helped wounded soldiers on the battlefield. So what he did is he gave water to the wounded soldiers of the Kalsa Army. But he also gave water to the wounded soldiers of the Mughal Army, the Muslims in that si, situation. The Sikh military, they were like, what are you doing? Why are you doing this? So they went to our tenth and final guru, Guru Gobin Singhji, our teacher, and he, they said, what is this guy doing? Why is he providing food and comfort to the enemy? And so, uh, Guru Gobin Singhji asked Baikaneji to come into his tent and asked him, what are you doing? And he said, well, when I see a wounded person, I see the grace of God in all of them, in all of humanity. I don't see a difference between a Sikh soldier or an enemy combatant. I don't see a difference. And so the guru told him, you are correct. And what he did next was give Baikaneji food, medicine, and water to give to all the wounded. So the idea that decapitate, uh, people who are incapacitated in the eyes of war, this isn't even civilians, this is soldiers. You treat them with respect and dignity. When they wave a white flag and they surrender, you allow them the right to surrender, you allow them the right to dignity. So when we are engaging in, uh, slaughter of civilians and we are engaging, because they cannot do it without our weapons that our taxpayer dollars fund, they cannot do the starvation without our consent because Israel, let's face it, is a client state of America. They cannot exist the way that they do without us. So what I implore to you is that we look at a different sen, uh, sense of humanity. In inhumane times, we have to grasp at our humanity and it's super important.
Your time is up, we got three minutes each person.
But it's, but it's super important that in inhumane times, we grasp our humanity. So I, I implore you to sign a ceasefire resolution now so that we can reclaim our humanity in inhumane times.
Thank you.
My name is George Ferrara, been a resident of Glendale Heights for over fifty-nine years. And the Glendale Heights has come a long way in fifty-nine years. It's one of the best, if not the best, place to live in DuPage County. Its progress is due to the people overseeing its development, they deserve our gratitude. I oppose our village being involved in politics that don't directly affect us. Involvement causes divisiveness, we have enough division with the Democrats and the Republicans. We don't need any more. Americans are a family and we must work together. I pity the Palestinians and the Israelis. They are doomed to eternal strife unless they learn how to coexist. I also strongly condemn the savagery and brutality that Hamas inflicted upon innocent men, women, children, and even babies. If this resolution passes, the board must also pass a resolution regarding Ukraine. How about resolutions for Haitians? Islamist militancy in Pakistan, El Shabab in Somalia and Kenya? The list goes on and on, where do we stop? We have no business here.
Thank you, George. Next. Name and town, please.
Good evening, my name is Fahim Beg and I live in Glendale Heights. Dear trustee members of the Village of Glendale Heights, I call upon you to vote yes for a permanent bilateral ceasefire, return of all hostages on all sides of the conflict in Palestine and Israel, restoration of aid to Gaza, including UNRWA and re, total rebuilding efforts of the destroyed homes and infrastructure. And why is this relevant to Glendale Heights? Because when you look at the cost of the four billion dollars that's being sent annually to Israel, or the fourteen billion dollars new package, we are sending at least annually, taken into account per capita of Glendale Heights, uh, population, five hundred thousand dollars annually from our taxpayers' money. And of this new package, a million dollars collectively. So it absolutely does affect us. Furthermore, the conditions that are, uh, taking place or the, the warfare that's being waged in, uh, Palestine right now by the Israeli military, as was mentioned by one of the prior speakers, is, can be designated as terroristic in nature because of its political motivations and has certainly be, been given categorization as plausible genocide by the International Court of Justice. There's no more need for us to go through details. I have sent individually to each one of you a long email that can be compiled into a book of all the evidence and all the backup of what can justify, uh, these, uh, categorizations and also delegitimize the actions of Israel. What's happening today is potentially a hallmark for what can happen further tomorrow. We are destabilizing the world by allowing this to go unheeded and unanswered. And the answer is not, as the Biden administration has done, to send over a hundred shipments of hundreds of millions of dollars of missiles and bombs that have been used in these actions since October the seventh. The answer is a ceasefire to bring everybody to the table as has happened during one of the ceasefires temporarily that allowed for numerous of, uh, hostages of I, Israel to be sent back home. We need more of that, less war, and therefore this directly is business that pertains to Glendale, Village of Glendale Heights as it pertains to all of America, as it pertains to the world. Please use common sense and vote yes for this resolution.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Esther Wook, I've lived in Glendale Heights for fifty-two years. When I come to these meetings, it's to make, this is a meeting for the people. This is a meeting for us, how can we make Glendale Heights better? When did it get to politics? I don't understand it and why are we involved in it? And it's, and I got this thing here that says, resolution calling for a permanent and immediate, immediate ceasefire in Gaza. If that was still gonna happen, this is, this is a village. Everybody should be able to vote on this and I'm sure it's not gonna pass. So I think we should just go back to being a nice village and, and doing what we can to make, uh, Glendale Heights a better town.
Thank you. Can I have your name and town, please?
I'm Nasir Yar Khan, I live in Glendale Heights. I've been here for the last twenty-two years, I've been a resident for twenty-two years. Um, to the village president, trustees, and esteemed members of the village board, thank you so much for this opportunity and to consider what's going on in Gaza with our tax dollars from Glendale Heights. My fellow residents just said we have nothing to do with it. I wish, I really wish we had nothing to do with it. But since our money is going to funnel their activities out there in Gaza, we have to care. I wish we could say, let's just live in our little bubble. Wouldn't, that would be a perfect, perfect world. If only our money wasn't going to fund massacres and genocide. So I'm calling for this village to do the right thing, to call for a ceasefire, a permanent ceasefire, to call for the reinstatement of UNRWA's funding so that they could actually serve the needy, and to call for humanitarian aid to reach the people of Gaza rather than them being shot at by snipers at four and five AM in the morning as they come to collect food. And that's a reality. Also, we'd like to call for all shelling and bombing of hospitals and schools and other infrastructure, which is harming civilians, to be stopped. Again, with our taxes. If you look at any of the images, you can see our taxes at work. And is this what we want? Is, do we want to turn a blind eye? Because when we do it to one country, but rest assured, it's gonna happen again and again in other countries too, where there are discriminations, where there are animosities. So if we set the bar high as to what we want to be and who we want to be, we can be a role model and example of what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, especially with our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, you're ignoring me. Yes, I had pulled Wayne Avenue. Um, I know you guys don't like to answer your questions this time, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. As the young lady pointed out earlier, the village attorney said that this wasn't a village matter and it wasn't village business. So how did it get on the agenda if it isn't? I thought the agendas were for village business. If he's saying it can't, it's not a village business, then how did it make it onto our village agenda? I know you're not gonna answer me because that's the new way we go, but I'm just, I wanted to point that out. I'd also like to say that in my twenty-five, no, thirty-one years as a village resident, I've never seen you guys talk about a foreign policy. So if we're gonna have a policy, why can't it be blank, blanket and broader? Why does it have to be for Gaza or for Ukraine? Why can't we be supporting peace for everyone? My friend was actually killed in Ukraine. So yes, I can relate and I, you know, I feel the daggers in my back right now, but you know, I can relate to it. So I understand why we have to have a resolution for one group. If you guys wanted to actually be more proactive, then you could say that, we say we're a proud and progressive group for everyone, well, we could also be a peaceful community for everyone as well. Um, and lastly, uh, they keep saying, uh, it's, I feel like they're pandering to try and whip us into a frenzy here in a crowd, but they keep saying our village money is, is paying for this. I don't know if they look at the budget, but I've looked at the budget every year for the last twenty years. I've never seen four hundred thousand dollars of our money going anywhere from this village directly. So, uh, unless somebody can show me that on paper, I, I, I think that that's, uh, some scare tactics. And, uh, I, I, you know, I just don't think that's the right way to do it, so. I, you know, I, I don't think this should be on here and I think, as Esther said, you know, it, it doesn't belong on the agenda and we should be for everyone, not one group. I understand why they want to try and help this group, but if we're gonna reach out and we're gonna invest ourselves into foreign policy, which we never have before, then it should be a foreign policy for everyone and not for. which we never have before, then it should be a foreign policy for everyone and not for just one group. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Marietta Britt. And I want to address to everyone in this building or in this room. I did something totally different than probably most of you. Being an African American, I have a wide diverse of friends. So I called my friend who is Palestinian, who is probably the most well-versed person of her history. When I first met her, she talked about her Palestinian history and the emotion that comes in. She gets me riled up and gets me set. I understand what is going on and I understand the, 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 the terror and what's going on with the people. I feel it. But then I did something else. I called my friend who is Jewish. And her first question to me was, why did Hamas bomb Israel? Innocent people. So there's two sides of every situation. And I think rather than us sitting back saying, well, you, 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 it's all of us. And so rather than demanding that this group of people sign a piece of paper, get up to Washington. Make your, make your, make your, 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 and, and that's great. But I'm sorry, as much as I appreciate my, my government in Glendale Heights, I don't think that the president's gonna take your phone call. So I'm gonna tell you all, make your voices heard, go up higher. Because I will tell you, in the corporate world, if I didn't get my answer, I would just start escalating. But don't hold, and I will tell you, I have village issues I'd like to discuss, but it feels really bad to bring out my little issues when we're talking about death and destruction. So death and destruction is going on on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. But anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, trustees, ladies and gentlemen. I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, but as a Palestinian American...
Can you state your name?
Yes, sorry. My name is Maryam Hothman and I live in Hothman Estates. And I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but as a Palestinian American, I felt a duty and obligation to speak against some of the misinformation that has been spoken here tonight. Let me set the record straight, ladies and gentlemen. History did not start on October 7th. Israel has been occupying and brutalizing Palestinians for seventy-five years. And it is, it has been a miracle through social media and journalists who are paying with their very lives to get the truth out of what is happening in Gaza. The starvation, the indiscriminate killing of innocent children, women, men, civilians. Because prior to that, the Israeli Hasbara, the Israeli propaganda machine, was able to fool the majority of us. And anytime the opposite side spoke out, it was treated as if we were subhuman. Let me tell you something. That's what the Nazis did in order to dehumanize the Jews. They called them terrorists pretty much. They said that they were rats. If your conscience is against what happened to the Jews, as my conscience is against that, then you should feel the same way as to what is happening. The genocide plausible by ICJ right now, but we can see, we have eyes, we have ears, we have a mind, we can use critical thinking to analyze and see what is truly happening. I feel bad and I did not support the killing of innocent civilians on October 7th. But my God, you should also feel appalled by over thirty-one thousand innocent Palestinians who are being slaughtered, hundreds every day. So if you are shocked and you feel sympathy for Israeli civilians, you should have the same moral compass. We are all created equal under God. And therefore, one child's death should be as equally horrific as another's child, regardless of their nationality, race, or religion. So I implore you, seventy percent of US citizens want a ceasefire. Seventy percent, ladies and gentlemen.
Maryam, thank you. Time is up.
Thank you. So vote, vote your conscience. You are standing up for humanity. You are saying enough of this. Let's get a political solution. Military solutions do not solve the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? One last call. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is Kesar Chishti. I'm a resident of Glendale Heights for the past nineteen years and it expired here. So when I heard about this discussion happening, just saying few words, I'm just using like my heart and the knowledge what's going on. Killing anywhere is not good regardless. It's going on in Ukraine, in Palestine, or wherever in the world. And, and then in the, in the case where the topic right now is that, should we consider a ceasefire? I believe so that right now there's a need for having a ceasefire in Palestine just to give an opportunity for the humanitarian aid to reach to the common person. Because as of now, all the, most of the hospitals and all the public infrastructure has been destroyed by the war going on. I believe the, the government, our government is trying to have some ceasefire efforts, which is going on and that is good, but it should also be encouraged. We should encourage that to take it to the next level and do it more of a ceasefire effort at this point. Then rather than like sending weapons and trying to have a higher level of war. So I believe many of our friends and community members here, about over the last twenty-four hours, there was a, like a petition going on. I don't know who started, but it's somewhere, somebody in the community. There are about three hundred, four hundred people who signed it and I think they can submit that to the Glendale Heights mayor and trustees just so that you can see the, your residents who are those people. So at this point, I think our main request is please consider, many other towns have done so, that please consider having a ceasefire just for the purpose that we can save some human lives, common men. So that way, anybody who has done something wrong can be, still be captured, but in a different way and can, and then we can save common people's lives as much as possible. So that's my request to you guys. If you can support that petition, your resolution, if you can support that, I, hopefully, it may help the higher, like the other higher government people in, in the Washington DC to hear and think about it, in other words. So that's all what I've, thank you so much.
George? You've already, you've already spoken. Can we have someone else, please? We're gonna try and keep it simple. Thank you.
Our rules don't allow, our rules don't allow.
I just, I just wanna make a point.
Sir.
All these people have...
Sir, the rules don't allow you to speak again. Sir, if you could, please sit down. Thank you very much.
George, thank you.
That just shows the division that you're creating.
George, guys, guys. Excuse me, sorry.
I think you need to follow protocol.
Guys.
Please follow protocol. Please follow protocol.
Ma'am, we got this control.
We got it. Thank you.
All right. I'm sure, Fran, you guys all know me. I'm in AFib right now, so if it's okay, Marietta's gonna read this for me because my heart's going a hundred miles an hour and I didn't bring my pills and I don't wanna have a heart attack tonight.
No, really? Is your time on the Marietta? Okay.
Yes. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That'll be fine. We got it handled. Thank you, please.
You have the floor.
I'm sorry.
You have the floor, Marietta? Go ahead.
This resolution is one side, is a one-sided travesty that ignores Hamas's culpability in this war and disingenuously seeks to blame Israel for defending itself against terrorism. An unconditional ceasefire means giving Hamas a chance to rearm and plan further attacks against Israeli civilians as they have promised. The resolution ignores that Hamas is a terrorist organization that is, that is responsible for this war. There was a ceasefire from May 2021 that Hamas broke by invading Israel, kidnapping citizens from their beds, and raping and murdering people. A hundred and thirty-six hostages were, are still being held by Hamas, the youngest of whom turned one while in captivity. Nineteen hostages are women who have been certainly, have been raped and subjected to other assaults. Moreover, the resolution quite clearly is meant to sever the tie between Jewish identity and the centrality of Israel. The resolution starts by mentioning colonialism despite the fact that Jews are indigenous to the land of Israel and have a continuous presence there for thirty-five hundred years. The resolution presents a false binary. You're either a Zionist, colonist, racist, white supremacist, or you support Palestine. Zionism is the right of Jewish people to self-determine in their ancestral homeland. Zionism does not preclude Palestinians from enjoying the same right. That's why two states for two people have been the stated position for the American Jewish community for decades. Additionally, this resolution seeks to co-opt the term genocide by assigning it to the war between Israel and Hamas. The definition of genocide is the deliberate killing of a large number of people from a particular nation or ethnic group with the aim of destroying that nation or group. This is not genocide. This is war. War is awful. People die. Israel isn't seeking to destroy the entire Palestinian people. Israel is seeking to destroy Hamas, which is an existential...
Marietta, I'm sorry. Time's up.
That's all right. I was almost done.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. We're all done with that. Onto our next. Um, let's see. Discussion regarding, I need my glasses for this one. An amendment of contractor registration fees and bonds. Mike, I guess this is yours.
It's my time, I guess.
Thanks.
So what I'd like to propose for the board to consider is amending the annual contractor registration fees. What, what we have right now, every year contractors who wanna perform work in the village, they, they have to pay a fee and they get their registration issued through the community development department. The fee currently is $100 for general contractors and $50 for other types of contractors, subcontractors, things of that nature. What we'd like to do is standardize it to a flat fee of $75. So effectively, it's, it's not an increase. We expect the net effect to be negligible. We get about $39,000 in contractor registration annually, or at least that's what we got for 2023. And so this is just kind of averaging those amounts because practically with the new cloud permit system, it doesn't make sense to build out separate fee structures based on those type of activities when it takes the same level of effort for us to, to put that registration in the system. So it's, it's just kind of housekeeping to make our administrative processes a little bit more consistent and shouldn't really have a, a net effect on the residents in terms of all of the contractor registration fees we collect.
Mike, good question for you. Contractors, which types are covered by this fee? All general stuff is electric, HVAC?
There are some exceptions for contractors which get state licensure. So some examples of that would be plumbers, roofers, fire protection, contractors of that nature. So they're exempt from paying the fee, but they still have to post a performance bond.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? No? So you're just looking for a direction, or is this a...
It's a discussion.
It, it's a discussion. I, I'd, I'd like to bring forward in organs to just standardize the flat fee.
I don't see any problem with it.
He would like to be able to bring this to the board next board meeting to codify the $75.
Okay. New business then, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's more of an introduction to let him know what's gonna be coming. Well, we wanna get a motion from the board to approve this, to bring it to the board so we can codify it.
All right. Well, I guess we'll put it into, Bill, you have a question?
No. I'll make the motion.
You wanna make the motion?
Well, since it's only a discussion regarding, what I would ask is if there's anybody who objects, to voice your opinion. Otherwise, consensus is to move forward.
No objections?
Thank you.
We're good to go.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Where are we at? Uh, community garden.
Yes, actually, the, I'm the one who put this one in. Almost a year ago, I proposed, I suggested for a farmer's market idea and that idea has been fulfilled and comes to true thanks to Chief Pappas and Tanya Mako. We have a farmer market. So now, when in our last board meeting, I saw about the community garden, I have presented and we have money. So, and I talked to Keith about it, that why don't we provide some plants and maybe sod or, or some things to our, to the people so they can grow maybe on your backyard or to the community garden and bring that crop, either vegetable, fruit, and they can, you know, bring it to our farmer's market. So that's the thing which I wanna discuss. And maybe Keith, if you can involve Tanya in that garden club, because she has some ideas and, you know, so we can have a kind of a, so the young people can enjoy outdoors and we can motivate them by giving the plants or, or to our old ones also. So that's the whole idea behind this.
Were you thinking like schools in general for school kids?
Not as good as anyone, any kids. I mean, you know, we, we have money, so why don't we provide stuff which is essential for gardening, meaning plants and garden soil or, you know, whatever is needed. And the only commitment which we are looking for is that you have to take care of it and you have to bring us the result. And result would be, you know, maybe we will run a kind of a competition or something or which motivates them. So something like that. Since we have a farmer market, they can also come to the farmer market and sell their crop and the half will go to the, any charity and half they can keep. It's something like that, you know, the, so it's, it's a, it's like, since we have a farmer market, we have a community garden, so why don't we have a bridge between them and work together and, and, you know, do something with that.
So just some preliminary ideas on that. And I kind of spoke with trustee Siddiqui about a couple of these is that this would be a great activity for the community garden or the garden club to also look at, because we've talked about getting people involved in different ways. So what I'd ask for is some time to kind of put together some ideas and some plans that we can bring back to you and kind of present some sort of more formal program that might fit what you're looking for. And we'll kind of keep trustee Siddiqui and anybody else that wants to be a part of that as we go so that when we bring it back, everybody kind of has something that they're looking, that can help the residents.
That's kind of neat. I can't grow a thing, but I, I would like to keep, that'd be nice. I'd like to be involved in that. Any other questions? You, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Let's see. Number three, proposed resolution calling for permanent and imminent ceasefire in Gaza. This one goes to...
Yeah, so I wanna bring the motion to the table. Yeah, so I wanna bring the motion to the table and, for this resolution.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right. No, no second. Motion dies. Onto other. Do we have any other? Apparently we have no other. How about a adjournment, then? Do we have? Chester.
Motion adjourned.
Pat?
Motion adjourned.
Okay. Second was Chester. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adjourned. Or, sorry, meeting adjourned.